All rise.
Good evening, everyone. Call the City Council to order at 8 o'clock on Monday evening, October 3rd, 2022. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have 22 items on our agenda this evening, and I will ask the city clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council meeting, September 12th, 2022.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? I don't know those in favor. Opposed, the minutes are filed 11-0. Agenda item number two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 40, location and height of buildings relative to attached roofs for entryways and porches, Order Number 22-108679. In addition, we have three communications from various residents regarding the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 40, in support of the proposed change.
Okay, this public hearing, we've taken up in four stages: public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the council. So we'll start with public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Sean Navin, 236 Bolton Street, Marlboro. Good evening. This proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 40, subsection F of our zoning would create a new subsection that will address an issue that recently came up when a resident tried to build a small roof over their front entryway. By way of background, back in November of '21, a resident submitted plans to build a covered entranceway at their front door, which was about five feet by seven feet, quite modest in size. In February of 2022, the building department acted appropriately and denied the application because the plan did not meet existing setback requirements for the home. In order to find relief, the resident then filed an application for a variance with the Zoning Board of Appeals in March of '22, and then in May, the resident presented their case to the ZBA. ZBA chair suggested that the residents work with the council to identify a potential zoning change that could help situations like this without creating unintended consequences and requiring variances every time someone wanted to build a portico over a covered entryway but lived in a home that was not set back far enough. The applicant then withdrew their application for a variance without prejudice, and they got in touch with myself and with President Ossing, and over the summer, we discussed potential zoning changes with the building department. The result is what we have before us. The building department drafted these changes that would allow this type of construction in limited circumstances without creating new challenges and unintended consequences. Legal has reviewed and placed the zoning change in proper format. So, long story short, this change is fairly straightforward, creates a new subsection that allows people in this situation, when they don't have the correct setback, to be able to proceed barring certain conditions. With that, who?
Thank you, Counsel Navin. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Any questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Counselor Perlman.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. I know in the new language, it only specifies single family or two-family. Is that because it wouldn't necessarily apply if it was a three-family, or was that just to keep it more limited?
So this only will apply to single family, two-family, will not apply to multi-families over that size?
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the councilors? Any additional questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing, the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs. Thank you. Counsel Navin, thank you.
Mr. President.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you. I would like to accept and move to accept and place on file the communications that are part of this agenda. We received several of them in favor. Make sure that they're noted in the record, and I would also just like to let the council know, the planning board set their public hearing for this for November 7th, so once that occurs and we get a letter from them, we'll add this on to the Urban Affairs agenda. Thank you.
So they're on the agenda. Do you want a formal motion to accept those correspondents, meaning they're on our agenda in favor? Motions made in second to accept and place on file the three residents' correspondences supporting the zoning change. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the three pieces of correspondence are filed 11-0. Agenda item number three.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for modification of a special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of VD Naturals LLC, DBA COSA dispensary, to amend Condition Number Eight relative to the hours of operation for the adult-use marijuana retail establishment located at 505 Boston Post Road West, Order Number 1922-107881I.
Again, this public hearing will take it up in four stages: first with the public speaking in favor, then questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and finally, questions from the city council. We'll start with the first portion of the public hearing, which is the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, President Ossing, councilors. For the record, Brian Falk, attorney at Myrick O'Connell, 100 Front Street in Worcester, appearing on behalf of the applicant, VD Naturals LLC, which does business as COSA. With me tonight from COSA is Manager Jigar Patel. As mentioned in the hearing notice, COSA is seeking an amendment to its existing special permit with respect to its hours of operation, seeking to expand those hours. Since opening early this year, COSA has become a good member of the business community in Marlboro, has run a successful operation. COSA currently has 10 employees and may be expanding that number. COSA's current hours of operation in front of you here, set by its special permit, which was issued in 2020 by the city council, and specifically, it's Condition Eight of that special permit, current hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Now with a few months of business and a better understanding of customer preferences and patterns, COSA is looking to modify its hours. The proposed new hours are as follows: Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. These hours are nearly identical to the expanded hours that were granted to retailer Garden Remedies two years ago, except the Garden Remedies may open as early as 9:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday. These hours are also comparable to the hours of operation that are set for various alcohol package stores in the city. All other aspects of COSA's special permit would remain the same. We're hoping these expanded hours would better serve COSA's customers and enhance revenues for the company and for the city. I distributed tonight and emailed earlier today a draft decision. It's almost identical to the draft decision, or to the decision that was done for Garden Remedies a few years ago, just simply modifying that Condition Eight, setting the new hours of operation, and that's there for the council's consideration. That concludes our presentation. We look forward to addressing your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Falk. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any members of the public have any questions? Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Any questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? No questions from the city councilors. I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs. Thank you, Attorney Falk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Number Four.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for modification of a special permit site plan from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Obashan Realty Company, Inc., to allow for a standalone Chipotle restaurant with a drive-through facility and eliminate the proposed bank and retail addition to the plaza located at 661 Boston Post Road East, Order Number 21-2122-108395F.
Again, this public hearing will take it up in four stages: public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the city council. So we'll start with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Again, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, President Ossing. Councilors, for the record again, Brian Falk, attorney at Myrick O'Connell, 100 Front Street in Worcester, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Obashan Realty Company, Inc. With me tonight from Obashan is Bobby Trickett and our site engineer, Matt Von Basie from Bowler Engineering. Last year, the city council approved a special permit for this location, which is the Wayside Crossing Shopping Plaza, to build a new standalone Starbucks for the drive-through. That project is under construction right now. Special permit also authorized a second drive-through for a new bank, which would have been added on to the existing retail building with additional retail space. This proposed amendment eliminates the bank and the retail addition, but adds a standalone Chipotle restaurant with a mobile pickup drive-through window. To orient yourself, this is the site, 661 Boston Post Road East. We're located in front of the Target, corner of DeShenzhou Boulevard, and bounded by the Target driveway and accessway. This is the current approved site plan for the project as of last year, with the bank and retail building added to the existing building. And this is our proposed amendment, eliminating the addition and replacing it with a standalone Chipotle. That's the building in the middle of the plaza. The Starbucks side of the site, which I mentioned is under construction, that will stay exactly the same. Like the Starbucks, the Chipotle will have indoor seating and ordering and seating for customers. The Chipotle drive-through will be for mobile orders only. That includes customers using an app and delivery operators such as DoorDash. There will not be an ordering menu at the standalone Chipotle. Customers will enter the drive-through lane to pick up when alerted to do so on their mobile app. A few spaces in the plaza will be dedicated to mobile customers to wait until an order is ready at the window, but they wouldn't be parked in the queuing lane. So while this is a restaurant drive-through, it won't have the impact or queuing need of a traditional fast food drive-through, because there won't be a waiting, there will be nobody waiting for folks to order. We had our traffic study for the site updated for this change, and the study indicated that the site is well-designed for a Chipotle window. I'm now going to ask our engineer, Matt Von Basie from Bowler, just to walk you through some of the changes to the site. Matt?
For the record, Matt Von Basie with Bowler Engineering of South Borough, Mass. As Brian had noted, the majority of it actually remains exactly as previously proposed and approved. The Starbucks facility is in the same location with the same drive-through, queue, and bypass lane. A lot of the landscape actually around the perimeter of the site, which we have worked with the Site Plan Review Committee, is exactly the same with the 50-foot landscape offer. The only changes are the Chipotle in the center. The bank and old retail space is removed, and a Chipotle is in. The bypass, the drive-through lane is off the right side of the building, running between the existing building and the Chipotle with a bypass lane which exits out the existing driveway, planned south, with some additional parking provided between the Starbucks and the Chipotle. The plan continues to try to meet a lot of the provisions of the Wayside District, including the sidewalk connection, which was previously proposed and continues to be proposed, through the site from Boston Post Road all the way through the Target sidewalk, bicycle racks for each of the proposed uses, and outdoor seating for the Starbucks and also for the Chipotle. A lot of the utilities are exactly the same as proposed, actually, previous coverage is the same, so our stormwater system, which is being installed right now, can be utilized for this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. So all conditions of the special permit and the site plan approval from last year will stay the same. We will be simply changing the approval of a drive-through for a bank, the drive-through for a restaurant. In terms of procedure, because we're in the Wayside District, the city council is both the special permit granting authority and the site plan approval authority. We appeared informally before the Site Plan Committee twice last month to explain the changes and gather feedback from the city's professional staff. We're hoping to wrap up with the Site Plan Committee and receive their comments soon, and then we'll begin working with the Urban Affairs Committee on further review. Overall, we believe this amendment is an improvement to the site. It will have slightly less building space, and will fill a restaurant need on the east side of the city. Thank you for hearing our presentation, and we look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Attorney Falk. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the council? Over to the microphone, Mr. Caruso, and get a name and address.
Dan Caruso, 38, Valleywood Circle. As you can see, I have no aversion to fast food restaurants, so I am not seeking opposition. I'm just curious if you could kind of show me, because I have a terrible time reading the small maps I saw online, what the traffic pattern is going into and out of the actual plaza itself?
Happy to. We actually have an exhibit that hopefully explains that. Lot of color coding, I understand, but it gives you a sense of what the movements would be. And actually, I'm going to have Matt come up and walk us through that, if you could, Matt.
So, again, a lot of color coding. This existing orange queue is the existing entrance by the laundromat, which would remain an entrance only. A second full access is proposed over on the left side of the site. This red movement would be the proposed movement for a Starbucks customer, would come in and around and out, and the blue movement would be the movement for a Chipotle using the drive-through. There's the green move would be parking, if they were parking in the middle, and then the orange for the parking in front. So the main circulation through the site would be in here, and then either in and out through here, with the circulation coming interior to the site. As part of the previous application, I'm sure the council members knew, with some wayfinding sign proposed, which directs people leaving the site to DeShenzhou Boulevard if they're heading west on Boston Post Road, as they wouldn't be able to take a left out of the Target driveway.
Okay, so there is a new, I'm so sorry, my voice went south on me. There is a new entrance off of that, I forget the name of the street, that comes up from DeShenzhou, right?
Yep, yeah, correct. I don't believe this is an unnamed driveway, but there'll be a new access, yes, correct, on this side of the property.
This may not be your bellywork, and I'm just sorry if I'm asking out of the turn, but are there improvements planned on that small little street? Because it's really not much of a street.
Not in the street itself. We're proposing landscaping along the street on our site and pedestrian connectivity, but no improvements to the road itself.
Okay. And this is also not in your bellywork, but people coming, you don't anticipate people coming in trying to take a left off of Route 20 in there, as they now do when they're not supposed to, all the time, into the Target area?
Yep, yeah, we did hear that comment as part of our previous application. I know it's something that was brought to Mass DOT's application. I don't know if we have the plans with us tonight, but I know Mass DOT is proposing a lot of signage and some striping modifications as they're redoing Route 20 to try to prevent people from wanting to do that.
Okay, that's my biggest concern, was that there were like four places along Route 20 where people do an awful lot of winking and turning where they're not supposed to, and that was my concern there. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add also that the prior special permit, there's a requirement that the signage at the corner of DeShenzhou actually show an arrow for the Starbucks drive-through that way. So folks coming in that direction will see that's where they're supposed to turn left, not to make the illegal left at the Target drive-through.
Thank you, Dan. Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Questions from Counsel Perlman?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate the map with the arrows. It's very helpful. My biggest concern is just about, I know it was mentioned with the mobile ordering, that people would not be going through a drive-through to order on-site, but they would have to do it through the app or ahead of time. What would the signage look like to make sure that people aren't trying to go forward? I'm sure there's only one window set up, but usually, a pattern of a drive-through, right, like a Dunkin' Donuts, people would be able to go through the different motions, so I just want to make sure that that doesn't get filled with people thinking they can order.
Sure. So there will be no menu board, there's no opportunity for you to actually make an order, so if you're heading in that direction and you weren't sure what to do, it would not be an option for you. We're also going to have internal signage that make it clear, this is mobile order only, pre-order, mobile pickup window.
Okay, great, yeah, I think the signage would be a really helpful addition and hopefully visible in multiple areas around the site, just in case people are coming from a different direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Perlman. Counsel Orm.
Thank you, Mr. President. While we're on the idea of mobile ordering, brand new to me, I never realized, is only allowed, so that these type of facilities only allow mobile ordering. So I would be the one that would pull in to expect a window to order from. What do I do at that point? You said there'd be instructions, but could I go inside to order?
Right, so it'll be like a traditional Chipotle with counter to order at and seating. This will just be an additional option, which is the mobile pickup window. So instead of customers coming inside to pick up when they pre-order, because you can mobile order now from Chipotle, you go inside and pick it up from the counter, or there's often a rack next to the door where mobile orders get picked up, and DoorDash and other types of vendors would do a pickup as well.
Okay. And are there other stores that I can look at as an example to see what their traffic volume is based on mobile ordering and inside ordering?
I can't point to one that I'm aware of. I know that a year or two ago, we had proposed something similar for the All-Town across the street. We ended up not going forward with that option, but they considered that at the time, and they have a few stores that operate that way. And as I mentioned, we updated our traffic study, which we'll provide that to the council, and that indicated that we're well-designed for the anticipated volumes.
And that was my next question. On the traffic study that was changed from the bank to the Chipotle, does it show an increase or decrease in expected traffic?
It shows a slight increase.
Okay. And you'll be getting that to us prior to Urban Affairs?
Yes.
For review?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Orm. Counsel Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I feel very supportive of the idea of a menuless drive-through as a way to kind of expedite the process, and this is unique, you know, and thank for reminding me of the one across the street, but I haven't heard any of the major franchises do this, but I've used this feature in Chipotle myself, and last time I was in there, you know, you could see a wall full of bags ready to go, so it's a very common thing for people just grab and go. So I think that's a great opportunity. I do think that this is a great opportunity for our community, and I live right near there, so trust me, I'll be a customer. But I think that this is, be a great opening for what's now pretty much was a wasted part of property, so it's very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ducey. Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Based on the first map with the actual landscaping, the, I don't know if those are two trees in the parking, or are they bushes? It just looks like it's very densely populated with traffic coming either way, and I would hate that they're not bushes, because it looks like it would be a potential blind spot for both of those. I don't have conservation or site plan, want to take a look at that. I mean, looking at the arrows, it looks pretty heavy, and then when you throw on the bushes, I just don't want, especially there's a crosswalk right there on both sides, I don't want any potential, just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dumas. Any other questions from the councilors? Counsel Landers?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
What's the seating capacity, Brian, for the restaurant?
Matt, do you have that? I don't have it off the top of my head.
I believe around 50 or 60, but I'll have to be honest, I don't remember.
50 to 60, but we'll get you a firm number before Urban Affairs.
If it were that big? I'm surprised. Yeah, okay.
I'm here, I'm sorry, Counsel Landers, I'm hearing more like 30.
Yeah.
We'll get you an exact number before Urban Affairs.
That's all right, I think 30 is more like it.
Thank you, Counsel Landers. Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs. Thank you, Attorney Falk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number five.
Communication from Councilors Ossing and Wagner regarding municipal aggregation, September 2022 update.
Counsel Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to share a few highlights from the report that was shared with all the councilors. It's, let's see where we're at right now. So the national, sorry, hang on. Marlboro residential electricity users participating in the municipal aggregate program have saved over $579,000 in the second quarter of 2022. The third quarter estimated savings are estimated to be over $375,000 for the quarter. For 2022, the total projected savings are $5,700,000, which is pretty amazing. And the Inspire contract has saved Marlboro residential electricity users participating in the program over $5.5 million since its inception in 2019, and going back to the very beginning in 2007, residents have saved $11.2 million for this program, which is fantastic. Municipal aggregation program continues to save Marlboro residents on their electric bills, and I would like to, at this time, move to accept and place on file the communication.
Motion made in second to accept and file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Orm.
First, to compliment the efforts of everyone involved with this. Second, for the general person watching these meetings, not the general, but the general public watching the meeting, if they're looking at their bills, they want to look under supply, correct, not distributor, and if they see the word "not Colonial Power, but Inspire" on their bill, they know they're automatically signed up. And if I'm not mistaken, everyone in Marlboro was already automatically signed up, but if you wish to opt out, that was the part you would take, you would be involved with. But I believe everyone in Marlboro that did not opt out should be with Inspire in case they're looking at their National Grid bills. Thank you, Mr. President.
So just as a point of information, there are about 4,000 Marlboro residents that are not in the program, that are either on basic service or some other third-party supplier, but they can call Colonial and switch as soon as they can. Counsel Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I know this is a multi-year contract. Do you remember when it expires?
January 2024.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And we're working, so I'll set that table right now. So prices for electricity are high, and we're working hard to see if we can get a good deal, because we've got nine cents here in the city. In 2024, our contract expires. We're working now to see if we can either blend and extend it or try to get a better, I'm not sure we're going to see nine cents, so with all this good news, there's going to be some gnashing of teeth at some point when we can't get a better deal, but we're working on it. Counsel Wagner and I are involved in doing the best we can, so hopefully that works out. Any other discussion? Hearing none. On the motion to accept and place on file the communication, all those in favor? Opposed, the communication is filed 11-0. Item six.
Communication from the mayor regarding municipal aggregation, press release.
Counsel Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some other highlights to point out here, I'm very glad that we did a press release. This is one of those wonderful benefits for city residents, that we want to make sure everybody understands what's happening. It's very concerning, it's a reflection of what's happening in the world, but National Grid winter rate is anticipated to go to $33.89 per kilowatt hour, remembering, we're currently playing nine, they're predicting it's going to be 33 cents a kilowatt hour, and this would go into effect for the six-month winter rate, which begins in November and continues through April of 2023. Again, the municipal aggregate, while this increase happens for people on the standard plan, our municipal rate, the aggregate, for the aggregate program, will continue it to be $9.39, a significant savings, and estimating that a home that uses approximately 600 kilowatt hours of electricity per month will save, normally, right now, with the nine cents to what the current rate is, which I think is around 11, saves about $147 a month, but when this new rate, winter rate, goes into effect, residents will be saving approximately $882 a month. $882 a month.
Well, hang on, look, can I just correct you? So when the new rate goes into effect, they'll save 147 a month, 800 over that six-month winter period.
Oh, the six-months.
That's okay, no.
Okay, all right, sorry. The numbers are just, it's such a-
We'll definitely get some phone calls on that.
It's such a, thank you for correcting that, but it's such a huge jump. I'm just really concerned with people that aren't on this program. Now is the time, if it's possible, to switch. The overall anticipated savings to the residents participating in the program will be, so total for all the residents participating in the program over the six-month period will be $9.6 million. And just noting, I said that we've saved $11.2 million since the inception of 2007, and this will just be in the six-month period, saving over $9 million. I do, we mentioned, I would like to thank the mayor and Council Ossing and former council in Tenere for putting this program in place, which is a significant benefit to Marlborough residents right now. And I would like to conclude by move to accept and place on file the communication from the mayor.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? So I'd just like to add that you've heard the news, electricity rates are going up. The amount of money we're saving the residents on their bill, some people have all-electricity, Council Landers?
Oh, that's right.
His savings will be in the order of $800 a month.
I'd be able to buy a new Lincoln, I think.
It's really pretty impressive, and so you all, you all had a part in this, putting this order together. I mean, so you've done real well, and have saved the residents, that's $9 million over the winter they have in their pocket to spend where they want to and not give it to the utility. That's pretty impressive, so I don't want to say stand up and take about, but you did a nice job. Any other discussion? All those in favor who accept and place on file? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $250,000, which moves funds from the stabilization account to the police department equipment account to fund the purchase of five new unmarked police vehicles.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to approve this transfer this evening. This is an ongoing part for capital improvement projects for the police department, and my motion would be to approve the transfer in the amount of $250,000 from stabilization account to the pub, to the public safety, which is the Department Equipment Police Fund, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the transfer of $250,000 to buy five police cruisers. Comments or questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $168,979, which moves funds from the stabilization account to the fire department equipment account to fund a new 100-foot aerial platform tower truck.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, very important item, I'd like to transfer the, for this evening, like to transfer the amount of $168,979 from the stabilization account to the fire department equipment line item. Also, just to, you know, to help go forward, to avoid any increases in production of this apparatus, I think it'd be imperative to move forward with this this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion made and seconded to approve the transfer of $168,979 from stabilization to further fund the ladder truck for the fire department. Any discussion on the motion? Council Orm?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad you just said the magic words, "to further fund." I hope no one's listening, thinking we're getting a ladder truck, I wish we were, for $169,000. I believe it's seven point, it keeps going up, that's why we're doing this, but seven, yeah, 1.7 million. So we're not getting a ladder truck for $169,000, but indeed, if we don't approve this quickly, the bid's going to keep changing, and we may be asking for more money. So I agree with the chair of the finance committee, we should approve this tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So again, councilors, remember, we used the opera money of a little over $1.5 million to approve the fire truck. The chief and his folks have gone out to do that, the price came in a little bit higher, so this is the additional money needed to purchase the vehicle. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the transfer of $168,979? All in favor? Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Chief, you're not disappointed you didn't come up to speak, did you? Didn't think so. Have a good evening. Good evening, gentlemen. Agenda item number nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $8,598.30, which moves funds from reserve for TNC surcharge to capital outlay police for the purchase of additional traffic enforcement equipment.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the transfer request in the amount of $8,598.30 to move the funds to the Marlborough Police Department for the purchase of additional traffic enforcement equipment, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the transfer. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, transfer's approved 11-0. Agenda item number 10.
Communication from the mayor regarding a gift acceptance in the amount of $1,000 from ERA, key charitable organization awarded to the council on aging to assist seniors with unanticipated fuel expenses.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the gift, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the gift. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda item number 11.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of N. Paul Tonthat to the Community Development Authority for a three-year term to expire on March 25, 2025, to fill the position vacated by Josh Daigle, who moved to the state-appointed seat, and the reappointments of Renee Perticato and Paul Sliney for three-year terms respectively to expire on March 9, 2024 and March 9, 2025.
Council Dumas?
Thank you, Mr. President. A move to personnel?
Motion made and seconded to forward to the Personnel Committee. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, it is forwarded to Personnel 11-0. Agenda item number 12.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding information on dismissal relative to WP Marlborough Mass Owner LLC versus Marlborough City Council.
Council Robi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the communication is filed 11-0. Agenda item 13.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding house-landing subdivision, acceptance of Geikis Lane as a public way.
Council Landers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Service Committee and also refer to the Planning Board.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Services Committee and the Planning Board. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is referred to Public Service and the Planning Board 11-0. Agenda item 14.
Communication from City Clerk Stephen Carrigan regarding notice of early voting hours for the state election.
Council Haven?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hard to believe that the state election is rapidly approaching. It is on November 8, and as the state law dictates, Clerk Mr. Carrigan has been required to offer two weeks of early voting in person, and that begins on Saturday, October 22. So a special thank you to you, Mr. Clerk, and your staff for all the work you put in for this, and a motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the early voting, which starts October 22. Council Perlman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just also wanted to give a shout-out to the city clerk and his entire staff for the primary, I was able to early vote, and they were using the new poll books that we approved the funding for, and it was very smooth, it went really well, so we really appreciate it, and just wanted to remind folks it's going to be in this, in City Hall as well.
In City Hall, yes.
Okay, and to see the website for the hours, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Perlman. Any other discussion? Seeing none on the motion to accept and place on file the communication. All those in favor? Opposed, the communication is filed 11-0. Agenda item 15.
Communication from Hidahiro Ode, Director of Planning and Policy for Ocarino City, regarding a notice that Ocarino City has a new mayor, Hiro Yuki Nakajimi, as of September 4, 2022.
Council Haven?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda item 16.
Application for site plan review from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of JW Capital Partners LLC for a mixed-use project at 57 Main Street in the Marlborough Village District.
Council Dumas?
Sorry, Council Robi, I hope I recusing myself from this vote.
Let the, please let the record reflect that Council Dumas will abstain from participating. Council Robi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer this to Urban Affairs Committee.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is referred to Urban. Ten in favor and none opposed, one abstained. Agenda item 17.
Petition of Verizon Wireless for the installation of a small cell wireless facility to be located on pole number 34 within the layout of the public way near Route, near 385 Farm Road, excuse me.
Council Landers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Service Committee and also appetizer.
We'll set a public hearing, right?
Public hearing.
Yep.
I meant public hearing.
Yep. Okay, so a motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Services Committee, and we'll set a public hearing for October 17. So again, go into Public Service and a public hearing October 17. Any discussion on the motion? Council Dusset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was visiting the site earlier today. This is a notorious dead zone for Farm Road, so I appreciate this being addressed. Just want to make note of that, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Dusset. Any discussion on the motion? On the motion, refer to Public Service and set the public hearing for October 17. All those in favor? Opposed, it is approved 11-0. Agenda item 18.
Petition from Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England, to install a new joint-owned pole 25-5 on Hayes Memorial Drive, beginning at a point approximately 350 feet north-northwest of the center line of the intersection of Nickerson Road for new commercial service.
Council Landers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Services and also set the date for the public hearing.
Motion made and seconded to refer to Public Services, and we'll also have a public hearing on October 17. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved to send to Public Service and set a public hearing for October 17, 11-0. Agenda item number 19.
Communication from the Department of Public Utilities regarding a notice of filing in public hearing on the petition of N-Star Gas Company DBA EverSource Energy for approval of its 2019 to 2021 three-year energy efficiency plan term report.
Council Brown?
Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda item number 20.
Communication from the Department of Public Utilities regarding a notice of filing in public hearing on the petition of N-Star Electric Company DBA EverSource Energy for approval of its 2019-2021 three-year energy efficiency plan term report.
Council Brown?
Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the report. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is filed 11-0. Agenda item 21.
Minutes of boards, commissions, and committees.
Mr. President?
Council Dusset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the boards, commissions, and committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file all the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the minutes are filed 11-0. Claims. Item 22.
Mr. President?
Council Dusset?
Thank you very much. Motion to send claims to the legal department.
Motion's made and seconded to send the claims to the legal department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, claims are forwarded to legal 11-0. Reports of committees. Council Dumas?
Thank you, Mr. President. The City Council Personnel Committee met on September 19. We've got a few items on the agenda. First one is Order Number 22-18663B, the appointment of David Laboussier to the Disability Commission for a term expiring in three years from the data city council. It was motioned by Council Dusset, seconded by the chair, voted 3 to 0. We had Order Number 22-18664A, the reappointment of Brendan Downey to the Historical Commission for a three-year term on March 25, 2025. Order Number 22-18664C, appointment of Stephanie Farakia to the Historical Commission for a term expiring for three years. And then Order Number 22-18664D, appointment of Kathleen Newton to the Historical Commission as well for a three-year term. All those were motioned by Council Dusset, seconded by the chair, and the committee approved 3 to 0. And then Order Number 22-18665A, appointment of Kathy Fadul to the Council of Aging for a term to expire on May 2, 2026. And then Order Number 22-18665B, the appointment of Judith Benedetto for the Council of Aging as well, to expire on May 5, 2025. Motion by Council Dusset, seconded by the chair, the committee approved 3 to 0, and then we adjourned at 6:44. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dumas. Any other reports of committee? Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on September 19, 2022 at 7:00 PM. We have three items that evening on the agenda. First item was Order Number 22-18662A, communication from Mayor Vigil with proposed salary ordinance, Chapter 125, Personnel, Section 6, to increase the salary for the head electrician to a maximum of $81,283.77, consistent with the HVAC technician salary, both being members of the MMEA. Commissioner Diavol stated at the, stated a transfer would not be necessary, as vacancies at the DPW offset funds required for the increase. He added that the increase will retain the employee currently in the position. On a motion by Council Perlman, seconded by the chair, the committee recommended approval of the increase of the salary for the head electrician as requested by the mayor. Vote carried 5 to 0. Next item was Order Number 22-18662B, communication from Mayor Vigil with proposed amendment job description for the head electrician in the Marlborough Municipal Employees Association in accordance with the City Code, Chapter 125, Personnel, Section 5, preparation of classification description. On a motion by Council Perlman, seconded by the chair, the committee recommended approval of the proposed job description as submitted. Vote carried 5 to 0. Next item was Order Number 22-18678, communication from Mayor Vigil with proposed salary ordinance, Chapter 125, Personnel, Section 6, to create a new position entitled Substance Use Prevention Coordinator and Intervention Specialist within the Health Department with seven-step salary table, minimum of $58,000 to a maximum of $65,317.42, for a 35-hour week, together with the required job description in accordance with the, with the City Code, Chapter 125, Section 5, preparation of classification descriptions. On a motion by Council Dumas, seconded by Council Perlman, the committee recommends first the following, approval of the new position with the salary ordinance as submitted